Danielle, good evening, everyone. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of April 27th, 2022. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic, which stands one nation indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. We have what may be a somewhat lengthy meeting this evening. And I will share the screen with you so you can see what's on the agenda. First off, we have a public hearing on a CDBG COVID grant opportunity. We had a public hearing as well two nights ago on Monday. That'll last just a few minutes. We have, as part of our agenda, discussion of that. And then an introduction to a project. Culvert Maintenance Plan will be joined by Ryan Morrison of Tie and Bond and Megan Lung from the DEC's Estuary Program. And they will tell us all about it. We'll continue our discussion about the municipal investment grant opportunity this year, do actually in just a week's time. We have several resolutions for going out to bed on generator projects, police agreement audits, and we will discuss setting a public hearing on a Cold War Veterans Exemption Extension and then Committee and Department Reports. So without further ado. Diana, would you be kind enough to read the public hearing notice?
Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on April 25th and April 27th, 2022, at 7:35 PM local time at the Town Hall 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, to hear all interested persons regarding the Town of Red Hook's community development needs and to discuss the possible submission of one or more Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, applications for the New York CDBGCV Fund funded under the 2020 CARES Act. The CDBGCV Fund is administered by New York State Office of Community Renewal, OCR, and will be made make available to eligible local governments approximately $60 million statewide for project costs related to preparing, preventing, and/or responding to the COVID-19 global pandemic for housing, economic development, public facilities, public infrastructure, and planning activities with the principal purpose of benefiting low, moderate income persons. The Town of Red Hook is applying for $2 million in CDBGCV funds to, one, improve farm labor housing conditions; two, undertake accessibility, water, utility, and other rehabilitation work at the town-owned St. Margaret's Cultural Center; and, three, provide administrative support for local food security network and acquisition of a mobile cooling unit; four, engage a project manager to administer the grant program. The hearing will provide further information about CDBGCV Fund program and will allow for citizen participation in the development of any proposed grant applications and/or to provide technical assistance to develop alternate proposals. Comments on the CDBGCV Fund program and proposed projects will be received at this time. The hearing is being conducted pursuant to Section 570.486, Subpart 1 of the CFR, and in compliance with the requirements of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. Due to the ongoing COVID pandemic, the Town Hall is closed to the general public except by appointment until further notice to the extent authorized pursuant to New York laws of 2021, Chapter 417, and Executive Order 11. As amended, the public will not be permitted to attend in person. Board members are expected to participate in the public hearing via teleconference or video conference. Please refer to the meeting agenda to be posted on the Town website at www redhook.org, listing the specific link, which will allow the public to view and listen to the proceedings live, which is expected to be available at www.panda20tv23.org. Click on "Watch Live." In the event that the hearing is required by law to be held in person, a further notice will be posted on the Town's website at www redhook.org. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard as follows. One, the public is encouraged to submit written comments by email or telephone in advance of the hearing to townclerk@redhook.org and 845-758-4606 by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please note 2022 Community Development Block Grant application. Two, written comments may be dropped in the Town's Dropbox in advance of the hearing at the Town Hall 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please observe the recommendations of the CDC regarding distancing and use of masks. All comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Three, interested persons may also email or request for a Zoom invitation to townclerk@redhook.org by 2 o'clock PM on the day of the hearing and indicating in their email a request to comment at the hearing via Zoom. Written comments may also be submitted to the Town Clerk at the Town Hall or via email at townclerk@redhook.org until 12 noon on Monday, May 2nd, 2022. If special accommodations are needed for persons with disabilities, those with hearing impairments, or those in need of translation from English, those individuals should contact the Town Clerk at least one week in advance of the hearing date to allow for necessary arrangements. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated April 12th, 2022, Diana Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Diana, thank you very much. Wow, what a mouthful. Those notices are getting longer and longer. Appreciate that, okay. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to open this public hearing, the second one, in three evenings. Is there a member of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Okay. For the folks at home, just updates on that opportunity. There no longer is additional funding except for farm labor housing. We would not be applying for $2 million. We could conceivably for apply up to $1 million. We did submit a two-page summary of potentially how we would use the monies. And we gave examples of projects that could be conducted with this type of funding. We still need more work to develop out a program that we would feel comfortable administering as part of CDBG. But just to know that the only category that is still available is farm labor housing. Okay, hearing no public comments this evening on this matter. I would make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill Hamel. Favor Jacob Testa.
Hi.
Julia Solomon.
Hi.
Christine Kane.
Hi.
Thank you very much. I'm going to, if it's all right with you all, I'm going to skip over discussion on this. So since we have two presenters with us this evening and jump right to number two. And there's the two-page form for the folks at home. And welcome to Ryan Morrison from Tie and Bond and Megan Lung from the Estuary Program. We've worked with Megan in the past at DEC. Who would like to start?
It is the Ryan Morrison Show tonight. I'm just here for support.
Okay. Ryan, we have you. Are you muted?
I was muted, sorry, Robert. You can actually move along to the next slide.
Okay, yes, I think we can. All right.
So, thank you, Robert, for having us tonight and to the board. Would like to give a 15-minute presentation to kind of kick off a project we'll be working on throughout the summer in the Town of Red Hook. Back in the fall of 2021, the Town of Red Hook was awarded a grant to complete a road and stream crossing management plan in the Town of Red Hook. This is kind of a joint effort between the Town of Red Hook and the Town of Mylan to inventory and assess road and stream crossings within the community. This effort has been taken on in the community in the past, but specifically for the Sawkill watershed. This will be a town-wide management plan and update all the crossings to new assessment standards. Robert, if you wouldn't mind sliding down to the next slide for me. Before we get started about what the present, what the management plan is going to be, we'd like to, you know, give our acknowledgements to folks that have funded and been part of the project so far. Obviously, to the Town of Red Hook and the Town of Mylan to allow us to do this assessment. We'd like to also acknowledge Cornell University, who's going to help us with some hydraulic modeling of the culverts that will help us assess flooding capacity for culverts. They kind of do a high-level capacity analysis that allow us to do a prioritization. And then, of course, the Newe Pick and DEC, who have funded this project for us. This project is completely funded by Newe Pick and DEC. And so obviously, that's a benefit to the Town of Red Hook.
Ryan, could I impose upon you to explain to people who Newe Pick is and what it stands for?
Sure.
I'll take that one, Ryan.
Go ahead, have at it.
Ah, so Newe Pick, I think this last we spoke, Robert. So Newe Pick now just stands for Newe Pick. We're a regional nonprofit that works to advance the water quality goals of Northeast states and New York and the rest of New England. But we are fully leaning into our weird acronym, and we are just Newe Pick now.
No New England Interstate Water Pollution Control Commission?
Oh, my gosh, you memorized the whole thing. Now I'm telling you to purge it from your mind.
Okay, here we go. Let's go to the next slide.
Thank you, Robert. So, a road and stream crossing municipal management plan will include the inventory of all of the crossings within the community. We're also going to catalog the dams within the community. I should say all the state-registered dams. Cataloging of the dams is going to help us identify barriers to aquatic passability. One of the key priorities or top priorities of this municipal management plan is going to be to remove aquatic barriers and allow the passage of aquatic life throughout the community and in between the communities of Mylan and the Town of Red Hook. Once we assess all of them, we'll provide a rank and prioritization. We'll get into this a little bit more detail. But our result is going to be a top 10 culverts. From those top 10 culverts, we're going to select three priority culverts for concept conceptual design. We'll do some more specific hydraulic modeling of those top three culverts and then size them and design some schematic replacements. And OPCs will also provide some narrative regarding permitting efforts that would be required for placing the culvert and identify some potentials for grant funding for the replacement. Background, so why Red Hook? Red Hook plays an important part in the Hudson River Estuary. As Megan had mentioned earlier, the Hudson River Estuary is the section of the Hudson River that has water from the Atlantic Ocean all the way up to the dam in Troy. You'll see that red star on our slide. That is Red Hook. Part of the Red Hook, or part of the Hudson River Estuary includes the Stony Creek, the Lansman Kill, the Lakeskill, Motherkill, and the Sawkill subwatersheds are all within the Town of Red Hook. Why are they ecologically significant? In the Town of Red Hook is Tivoli Bay, which the Sawkill and the Stony Creek discharge to. The Tivoli Bay is a very ecologically significant area as it relates to rare birds, what really rare wetland plants. There's a nice park there. And so water quality is very important. In addition to water quality, there's a lot of habitat there that goes in and out of the creeks. And so we're trying to provide additional connectivity and habitat for those animals to migrate throughout. In addition, you have the trout and trout spawning creeks of Sawkill, Lakeskill, and Stony Creek. And that's a migratory fish that comes up here to breed in the creek and then goes back out into the ocean. And then you have the American eel, which is one of the major major benefactors of this program. The American eel actually migrates to the ocean to breed and then comes back up into the estuary to live its life up in the small creeks, including the ones in the Red Hook, and then goes back out to the ocean to breed again. So migratory animals, you know, really appreciate the added connectivity and habitat for them to live in. The goals of this program, obviously, to improve habitat, restore the free-flowing condition of streams. We want to keep the stream channel as natural as it passes under roadways as possible, and then reduce flooding hazards. As we all know, the floodings become more of a problem of late. You can move on, Robert, to the next one. Thank you. We've kind of talked about the steps in stream crossing management plan already. The main piece to pull out of this slide is really how this project sets us up for future phases. After we're able to get to the schematic design phase at the end of this project, it opens the town up for additional grant funding in the future for the complete construction design of the culverts as well as the construction of the culverts. And while I can't guarantee that additional grant funding will be available, and either can Megan, we have been successful in the past in helping other communities receive grant funding for the construction of culverts. And so this project kind of sets us up nicely for that. And obviously, after you're able to execute some of the schematic planning and into construction planning, we'll want to come back to this plan and kind of reassess what our new priorities are. Robert, if you could move on to the next slide. For inventorying, we are scheduled to do around 95 culverts within the Town of Red Hook and the Town of Mylan. Tie and Bond is when I say we, the DEC and Megan are going to be doing more culverts crossings between the two of us. We'll, we'll try to get all of the culverts within the community. I think Megan already has a head start on me. She's already out in the field getting some of these already. When we inventory the culverts, we're taking dimensions of the culverts, the material, the condition, inlet and outlet grade are very important to understanding the aquatic barrier rating. And the result of our assessment results in aquatic barrier rating that allows us to assess whether a crossing is moderately crossable for an aquatic animal, very, you know, very easy for an aquatic animal to cross or severe barrier. And these ratings are publicly available at the link provided below. And we can provide this link to Robert so that it can be put up on a Town website if anybody's interested in checking out that map. Just quickly noting, I'm not sure how visible this is to everyone. It's a little blurry on my screen. But there's already crossings that have been assessed within the town. You'll notice that there's some red squares that label severe barriers. These are barriers that will, will probably be at the, on the priority list of the top 10 culverts. And obviously, the closer to the river that barrier exists, the more of a priority it will be. I think that's all we need to touch on there, Robert. Thank you. As part of the process I talked about earlier, we're going to do rank and prioritization. We'll ask the Town Board and Robert and Teresa Burke from the DPW to help us put together a working group. We've already identified, obviously, the Sawkill Watershed Group as being part of that group. But we'll have some working group meetings where we'll set priorities within the community. On the right-hand side of that slide there, we have an example of a prioritization we've done for another community in the past. It's a matrix that we use to rate the priority of culverts. Each community is a little different. And so we'll, we'll amend this matrix for each community. And this will help us provide a score for each crossing and help us identify the top 10 culverts. After we identify the top 10 culverts, we'll have a second meeting with that working group to pick the top three out of the 10. After we have the top three, we will design these crossings in accordance with DEC guidelines. DEC has a requirement that a crossing is 1.25 times its stream channel bed width. And what we're trying to achieve there is not only aquatic passability, but terrestrial animal crossings. You'll notice that in that diagram on the left-hand side, that there's area within the crossing that is dry and not within the wet area of the stream. So animals can kind of cross under it. It helps provide a more friendly crossing for animals. We'll also be designing these culverts to 100-year storm crossing, which obviously provides flood mitigation for now, but also well into the future. The next slide here is just kind of identifying what some of the funding opportunities are. Obviously, climate smart communities, which Red Hook's already a part of, is an opportunity to receive funding. Wquip is a good opportunity. We've listed FEMA for pre-disaster mitigation grant, and then the Hudson River Estuary Program. We'll identify each one and how the town can apply within our report. Permitting for each one, we've just kind of provided a list here for what the different culvert permitting requirements may be. Each culvert will have to identify different permits required. For example, the New York State Protection of Waters permit would be required for, say, the Sawkill Creek, which is a trout-spawning stream. And there's a number of streams here, which will be listed as an ADRC stream, which speaks to its water quality requirements. Other permits would include Seeker freshwater wetlands permit and a natural heritage program permit. I think that's it for us, Robert. I don't know if the board has any additional questions for us on how the process will go.
Oh, they haven't even started with questions with you, Ryan. But let's see if we've got them. Anyone?
Yeah, I have a couple. Thank you, Ryan, I appreciate it. This is obviously really important work and work that the town has been considering quite a bit over the past few years. So I guess my questions relate to how you all hope to integrate the studies that we've already had done. For example, by Fussin' O'Neill, I think, a few years ago, as well as ABT out of Colorado, working with Columbia University to do some inland flooding modeling for changed climate conditions. And so I guess I was imagining that those could be useful, both in terms of any pre-existing inventory data, but also in building into the prioritization and the, you know, the sort of design and sizing, some of that modeling work and, you know, identifying proximity to critical infrastructure or flood risk, things like that.
Yeah, thank you, Julia. I am aware of and actually have the Fussin' O'Neill Report. I was planning on helping, using that to help us prioritize. I was not, not familiar with the other report you mentioned, the inland flooding report. How long ago was that done, Julia?
That was maybe out of 2018, something like that. We can, we can pick that up for you.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else have questions for Ryan or for Megan?
What, what's the timeframe that you're gonna be out in the field through this?
Sure, so we'll be, I think we're planning on trying to wrap up sometime in June for the fieldwork portion. And then we would have our prioritization meetings somewhere over the summer, July and August, with a wrap-up for the report in late fall. This is kind of what our timeline is right now. But we would be expecting fieldwork to hopefully be over by the end of June.
Okay. Thank you.
Robert, just from your perspective, I do like to have, make sure some folks at the Town Hall know that the study's going on and that sometimes we do get some residents wanting to call in to either the clerk or somebody at the town. Just people are walking around in the road with vests on. People get curious.
You have some ID on you, Ryan?
Always.
I want to see that as well. We will, we'll put a notice out. Probably will do a news alert as well through our notification system. But if you have in particular locations and you want us to, you know, try to do additional messaging, we can, just, just to let folks know.
Great.
Anyone else? Any other Town Board members have any questions or comments? Very good. Well, we, we know the importance of this work for not only critters but our municipality. We've seen just over the last several years since some of those studies that Julia referenced, we've seen how the climate impact is happening on a local level. And we're seeing a lot more standing water, a lot more drainage, infrastructure failing or not keeping up with the sudden rainfalls that we've had. And this work is becoming more and more critical. I was just in conversation with the Deputy Mayor of Tivoli today. And, you know, the conditions they have out there. As we all know, that wonderful Tivoli clay soil. They've got a lot, a lot of standing water in the village there, so. Very good. Megan? Thank, thank you very much for joining us. Thank you very much for this opportunity. It's great to see you, even if it's remote, again. And Ryan, thank you for all your good work. Megan gets to leave us, but you have to hang out for a little longer, Ryan. Is that okay?
It's good with me, Robert.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you both very much. And Megan, speedy recovery. We'll, we'll see you soon or talk to you soon.
Yeah, and if anybody wants to, you know, come out into the field with us, you know, certainly, you know, get in touch with me, either, you know, through Ryan, or you can just email me. We have volunteer forums, so if anybody is kind of curious about what is that woman in the skirt and the safety vest doing? I can show you.
Okay.
All right. Thanks so much, Robert.
Thank you, Megan, so much. Have a good evening. All right. The reason I asked Ryan to hang on for a little bit is because the next item on the agenda is something we've been discussing for the municipal investment grant opportunity this year through Dutchess County. And that is a connection or a potential connection from Rec Park East to what we commonly call Rec Park West. So Ryan, let's see if we can get something up here that folks can take a look at. All right. I think I've got that up there, right, folks? Can you see that? I know it's not that easy to see, but. See if we can blow it up a little bit. Okay. Ryan, would you like to take it away and describe to the folks at home what they're looking at? Are you on mute, Ryan?
I keep putting myself on mute, sorry, guys. I'm looking, what we're showing here is a connection path between the two rec parks. What we're looking to provide is a shared use path for both bicycles and pedestrian traffic to move freely between Rec Park East and Rec Park West and be out of the travel lanes for traffic. As many of you may know, Rec Park West went in a couple of years ago, just before COVID. And we had some plans for future expansion of a parking lot and site access, including that gravel path, their stone dust path that you see there on Rec Park West. But we had not identified previously a project on Fruit Bud Lane to help connect from Linden Ave all the way down to Rec Park East. So this project would kind of holistically connect the two. The shared use path along Fruit Bud Lane would be a 10-foot-wide asphalt pathway that would be raised up from the roadway a little bit. There would be an additional sidewalk that would be located on Rec Park East from the pavilion to Fruit Bud Lane. Then the asphalt path along Fruit Bud on the north side to a striped crosswalk that goes across Linden Ave. Once we land on Linden Ave, there would be an asphalt landing pad within the county right-of-way, which would connect to a stone dust pathway. The stone dust pathway would be ADA accessible, a little bit more in tune with what Rec Park West's previous designs were. You may notice that odd-looking switchback within the stone dust path. What we're trying to achieve there is make sure we meet accessibility standards so that access between the two sites would be completely accessible. For those of you that are familiar with the site or those of you that are not familiar with the site, there's quite a bit of gray change in that area. So we're just trying to, to help ease that gray change between the two. So we're just trying to, to help ease that gray change between the two, the upper level and the lower level. Not only does this provide access between the two parks. But it helps provide access to the Winnicky Land Trust Trailhead, which is right at the other end of the parking. Also connects the V two V trail. Helps connect the community of Linden Acres to the high school into the village. So it really does provide a lot of, a lot of benefits to the community. We have been in touch with the county on this. The county is on board with providing signage for this crossing and is okay with the town providing striping in that area. And so, you know, obviously I think we're good from that perspective. Robert, is there anything else you, you had questions or wanted me to add to this? Description?
No, I think it's a pretty good description. There's a couple of paragraphs that we've got here. Of folks want to. To read about just the length of the. The path and on each side and that. The width and to understand where it's located. I think that, that pretty much captures. The basics of what the proposal would be. We do have a rough estimate of. A little over a quarter million dollars, two hundred and seventy-nine, I think, right? You provided us with. The grant would. Give us a hundred thousand dollars towards that. And then we would need to appropriate money from reserves or. You know, other, other sources that are available. In order to complete the project.
Ryan, I have a question for the, the park that's on Fruit Bud Lane. Are we, this ten foot wide path, is that going to be? Contained within the current roadway or would we be adding essentially ten feet to widen it for the path?
Simplistically, we're adding it. I, I think what we're going to need to do in design phase is. Get a survey that includes the right of way. And understand where that road falls within the right of way for the town. We may end up shifting Fruit Bud a little bit south. To not impact the, the residents to the north. So there would be, you know, if we shift Fruit Bud down a little bit and maybe share the impact five foot one way and five foot the other way. That way we're not extending the road time ten foot just to the north. But until we get into the design phase and, and have a survey and understand where that road falls within the right away. It's a little tough for me to answer at the moment.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think we, we do wanna stay within the, the deeded portions of the road. In order to accomplish that.
Ryan, what's the, the rationale for having that ten foot wide path on Fruit Bud be elevated relative to the existing roadway?
So we kind of went back and forth on that. Our idea behind having it elevated is it provides a. It provides a visual and physical barrier for pedestrians and bicyclers that may not be paying attention. Typically between rec parks, you have a, a younger crowd that may not be paying as much attention on bikes. And so that feeling of dropping down would help notify them that they're going out into a traffic travel way. It also provides kind of a physical barrier for cars to understand that there's, hey, we're going up onto a pathway. If it was just all one level path, our concern would be that it wouldn't feel. That there wouldn't be that physical barrier and that there would be conflict between vehicular traffic and pedestrian bicycle traffic.
Thank you. That helps. Um, I've got one more, if you've got a minute. Which is on the, the sort of sighting of the park on the west side or the path on the west side. You know, what was the rationale of putting it kind of deep into the field like that? I think before I saw this plan, I was imagining it running closer to the existing drive. And I'm just curious what that thought was.
Sure. In, in the future, there is, there would be hope if there was expansion on Rec Park West. To provide the additional parking that we had previously laid out in a master plan effort. And so that area that's identified is already graded and ready for a parking lot. And so we're trying to be cognizant of not providing something that would conflict with future design phases. That would kind of bring you into the center of the park. And not, not conflict with future vehicular traffic into that parking lot.
Okay, thanks. And last one is just that I'm, so I walk here pretty regularly and that is a scary crossing. I'm happy to hear that there will be striping and signage. And this is probably a county question, but it would be great at some point also to get one of those like flashing pedestrian crossing things that you can deactivate. As the person wanting to cross, because traffic goes really fast right there.
I did sit on, in on the meeting with the county. The county was hesitant to provide flashing beacons. Only because the more of them you provide, the less effective they become. They've centered the flashing beacons around the school to the south. And they felt that that was a more effective way to go. They're going to provide signs not only at the crossing, but a thousand feet on either side. So that there's a warning sign and then a crossing and then the visual, the striping. And that was kind of what they agreed to at that time.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board members for, for Ryan? We don't need to have a resolution to go ahead with this grant. But I'd like to at least entertain a motion to go ahead and apply this year for a hundred thousand dollars. Wanna first of all, thank the county. The county knew of our interest to provide a safe crossing from Mark Park East to West. And they've been responsive over the years. To tailor their programs to the needs of the local municipalities. And this year, the grant. Opportunity, just like it did last year for generators, which we were successful for, for that. They've tailored the project. Possibilities that we, we fit in this category, so. Thanks to them. So at this time, if there's no further discussion, like to entertain a motion to go ahead. And to apply for this main grant for a hundred thousand dollars towards. The construction of the pathways and related crossing. Associated with that. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Okay, Ryan. Ryan's still on mute, isn't he?
No, I'm still here.
He's still there. You get to go home, Ryan.
Thank you.
With much gratitude for your taking the time out this evening on both of these matters. We very much appreciate it. And we will be in touch soon, obviously.
Great. Thanks, Robert. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay. Why don't we jump back before we get too out of sync here? Why don't we jump back? To the first item on the agenda, which was in fact. The. Discussion on the CDBG COVID cares grant. We. Close the public hearing. This was the second public hearing. We had on this matter. Share the screen again here.
Did we get any written comments from the public hearing from Monday?
We did not. We did not. And we, we are, you know, getting more information from potential project applicants and. You know, changes to what might be projects that they would like. To have funded. Obviously, there's a good bit of work that still needs to be done. But it would at least appear to me that this is a really good opportunity to take advantage of very specific. Dedicated funding. It's for farm labor housing and we've invested. Our heart and soul and in some cases leveraged funding into protecting our farms. And a key component of that, as we know, is farm labor. And it's becoming more and more challenging to find labor period. And, and if we can make these accommodations healthier and safer. I think that, that only benefits the community. If we can accomplish that. Clearly, we would have to figure out. Exactly how the money would be allocated and how farms would apply to the town. As part of the program. But with the, the thanks of the folks at the EDC. We do have already a very good start of who's interested and potentially what projects. They may be. And so. My suggestion would be that we consider entertaining. A motion to, to allow me to work with OCR. Office of Community Renewal. To make a grant application. For up to a million dollars. We'll get more information from a potential project applicants. And we can nail, nail down that, that figure. And, you know, begin to work on how we might develop a program. And who we might consider helping us with, you know, not only the grant, but administering. The projects if we were to be successful. Any thoughts on that, folks? Town board members?
I just have a sort of a logistical question. You know, the town, if, if we're successful, then the town will be the grantee on the project.
Yeah.
And so, and essentially, what, from some of what I've read so far, we, we have to have. It looks like one. A general contractor, let's call it, for all, to oversee all of the projects.
That's, that's correct, yeah.
So would we have to go out to bid for that or can we? I, does it, I guess, does it talk to that process or how that part works in any of the grant documents that we've seen so far yet?
You know, that's a good question. They have forwarded to us some information, but yeah, we would have to, like with all federally funded. Even though this is running through the state federally funded programs, we'd have to look at specifics involved with that. You know, my, my guess is yes, we probably would have to.
Yeah, because I, I was just wondering if that. Part of the process would be counted within the twelve months. For the project of the. You know, the actual construction parts of the project.
Completion, yeah.
Given the, you know, still supply chain issues that are out there, that would be something important to. Get figured out.
I'm sure the question of extension is something that they will have to grapple with after twelve months. But, you know, we, we, we should do everything we can if, if we decide we'd like to go ahead with this. To. You know, work simultaneously on constructing the program, reaching out to potential applicants. Going out to bid for a project manager or contractor. And, and get it done within twelve months.
And what is the timeframe for when they will make the decisions on the grants? Since we're, you know, heading into construction season.
You know, the. Yeah, the deadline for the grant is the first week in June. And, you know, they spoke about wanting to, you know, to, to be able to select. Successful applications soon thereafter. You know, the nice thing about the way they're conducting this program is that they're giving you a sense. Of whether or not you're, you're on the right track before they go ahead and approve the application. They're having sort of a, a pre consult. That's the purpose of this two pager. Is for them to. Know what you're thinking and maybe give you some guidance on whether or not it complies with the intent. And the specifics of the program.
Right. I was just trying to get a better handle on the timing.
Yeah.
You know, for when, when the twelve month period might fall, because you know, June to June is different than like October to October.
Right.
Ordering, ordering things. That's okay. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else?
Yeah, I had one thought, Robert, which was just that, and I'm sure this is already on your mind. But I think as we get farther along in conversation with potential applicants, assuming that we did choose to move forward. I just think it would be really important to make sure that they are clear on all of the. Sort of logistical requirements that go along with this funding. Having to do with, as Christine was mentioning, the timeline for construction, the fact that it is a reimbursement grant. And, you know, income documentation required related to the, the farm laborers who would be using that.
Yeah. Program specifics, very important before they, they, they get involved. Yeah. Already on my mind, as you said. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
So you, you, you do want a resolution to authorize you to?
Well, I guess the question is, the question is, are we, are we ready to do that? I think, you know, since it's first come, first served and, you know, we've seen some of the other pools of money. Dry up. I don't think I would hesitate. I would go ahead and indicate. To OCR that we intend to take advantage of this opportunity. As we always say, if there's gonna be grant money out there, we want it back here.
The only suggestion I would have is. That whatever application we put in, that we don't lock ourselves into specific things. Because we haven't done all the work we need to do. And so that our application as written is clear that, you know. You know, including but not limited to or. You, we need to have some language so that the people who are reviewing our grant application understand that just because it was in the two pager. Doesn't necessarily mean that these, that these farms would get this amount of money for these specific projects.
Yeah. Will do. I hope I put some language in there. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it was pretty clear.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we proceed with the. Grant application.
Okay.
And that we authorize the supervisor to work with OCR. On that.
Okay, up to a million dollars. We'll see where we, we come out. Okay. Thank you for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Jacob? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
So Hamel?
Hi.
And myself, hi. Very good. Thank you all very much. And again, thank you to the folks at the EDC for their work. And thank you for the farmers and the farm labor. Folks who make it possible for us. To enjoy locally grown food. Okay. Where are we now on our agenda? Gonna move back to. Number four. That's a resolution to go out to bed on the generator projects we spoke about. Municipal Innovation Grant Project for the folks at home. Where we applied for monies. Again, this came out of discussions in prior years about the need for our community to be, be more resilient. Generators are critical to our community. The Red Hook Community Center. Axes are heating and a warming and cooling center, but it doesn't have a generator. In fact, Mill Road doesn't have a generator. Most of the time when students are sent home, it's because there's no power to push the toilets. Keep that in mind about, you know, some projects that we may want to entertain in the future. So we applied more successful for a good chunk of the money. The town will have to appropriate some budget funds. We'll see when this comes in. We'll be replacing our generator, which is la- We'll be replacing our generator, which has lasted over thirty years here at Town Hall and is ready to be replaced. Okay. Very exciting stuff. Not really, but important. It's resolution number nineteen. It's authorizing the solicitation of public bids for the acquisition and installation town of Red Hook. Town of Red Hook for generators and the Meg project. And is there a second for that?
Before you do that, could I ask you to modify the motion to include a date for bids to be received before, after May ninth?
Yes, May ninth, and I do want to also point out one change. Thank you, Chris. Little addition, not so little important to the scope of work. Let's see if I can pull that up. Yeah, so here's the resolution. Thank you, Chris. I was just about to get to that. Can you all see that on the screen or is it not shared?
It's not shared.
So, May ninth, the two PM. It'll give a full week some some bids and then some. One of the minor changes in the scope of work of the document, the first document you had, there's a there's now an H because we want to make sure the spec includes maintenance service for two years from the date of substantial completion and also emergency service. So here's what the language for H now, it's revised to include H, provide emergency service for two years from date of substantial completion. Emergency service response time shall not exceed four hours from the time provider has contacted. Obviously, if it's the middle of the winter, the power goes out because of a storm. We need somebody who can get over here in a matter of hours, not in a matter of days. So that that needs to be included in this.
And Robert, I would just like to clarify that the May ninth is going to be the earliest date that you would take bids, but you will look at the actual date of publication and certainly the county requires that we comply with notice on their Empire State bidding process. So we would need to make sure that we can comply with that and still fall within that date. So usually the timeframe says our such later time is determined by the supervisor to allow for that kind of modification.
Thank you very much. And I'm a draft. The documents is in front of you as well. Were there any questions about any of this? Very good. So I think we had a motion or I I did the motion number nineteen dated April twenty seventh. Is there a second? I think Bill got in there. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Jacob Testa? Julia Solomon? Christine Kane? Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. Number five is sort of ministerial. It's been a while since we had a fresh the upping of the police agreement. It automatically renews each year. But we have a different amount. We've increased the funding to ninety thousand. And so the board needs to approve the amended police agreement. Otherwise, there are no changes to that. That is resolution number twenty. No questions about that before we entertain this? Authorizing the of the police services agreement, the Village of Red Hook for the folks at home, your police is contracted from the Village of Red Hook. The town of Red Hook does not have a police department of its own. We share in the cost of that. I assume of resolution twenty. Is there, who was their second? Was that Christine? It is now.
It is now.
Wasn't that? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Julia Solomon? Jacob Testa? Bill Hamel? Thank you very much. Next up is resolution twenty one. Again, another ministerial thing, but important work that we have to do for the justice courts each year for the folks at home. There are audits that are conducted by our auditor. There are select audits. They look at the procedures and process. And there's a requirement for the judicial courts that those audits that we accept them as well. The audits were conducted at the end of March. The year ended December thirty first. It's resolution number twenty one, accepting those audit reports and they are available at the clerk's office. Is there a second of that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Christie. Looks like you're going to be the second tonight. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Bill Hamel? Jacob Testa? Julia Solomon? Thank you very much. Moving right along. We have resolution number twenty two for the residents in our community that are eligible. Years ago, we passed legislation to allow for an exemption, a property tax exemption, it only pertains to to town taxes, not to school taxes for Cold War veterans. The ten years is up. And if we want to extend it and perhaps even modify it, we need to go ahead and it would not be effective for the twenty twenty two year. This would be for next year that it wouldn't be effective. Chris Shaw, may I ask you to briefly explain the parameters and what is possible with extension and modification?
Or so the one of the sections here, there is an option on the part of the board to extend the term of any one exemption from ten years to as long as the person remains a qualifying owner. So that exemption could extend for a longer period of time. The second proposed amendment is that in the additional exemption for persons with service-related disabilities, our statute, which was presumably based on the original version or our code, excuse me, said it was based on forty percent of the disability rating. It's now required to be fifty percent of the disability rating. So that's a what I would call a technical correction that we should make if we're making other changes here. But then there are two other things that the board can consider in the information that's available from the Office of Rural Property Services. There's a sort of schedule of options on the part of the local municipalities. The original options were a ten percent or fifteen percent option. And you've selected the fifteen percent option, so fifteen percent of the assessed value would be exempt. But then there's a cap on that exemption and the cap that you originally chose was the the cap that was the basic maximum, what's referred to as the basic maximum of twelve thousand dollars. But by local law, you are allowed to select a number of other levels if you so choose, twelve, fifteen, eighteen, twenty one, and so on, up to forty five as a maximum for that basic exemption. And then for the additional exemption for persons with service-connected disabilities, that maximum can be changed from forty, excuse me, yeah, forty thousand dollars, which is again the basic to a higher number, various levels up to one hundred and fifty. So you can choose a different number for the proposed local law if you would prefer.
You, could I ask you, Chris, could you repeat the the two categories and what we can? We can go from twelve thousand dollars up until forty thousand dollars.
Forty five, right. That's the that's the base, that's the Cold War veterans exemption for people who are fall into that category. So it would be fifteen percent of assessed value up to a maximum of whatever that number is. Okay? And then for the additional exemption allowed for persons who have a service-connected disability, that there's an additional exemption, which is the product of the assessed value of the property multiplied by fifty percent of their disability rating. Okay? Provided that it will not exceed. And then again, the original number is forty thousand dollars. You can adjust that if you choose. Okay?
Certainly, the 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 values, the assessed values and for the folks at home know that assessed values, residential values for for this year, you'll see them in in your new assessments coming out, which will be relevant for next year's taxes. The assessed values are going up by seventeen percent according to our assessor. Every residential property, so it shouldn't impact your share of town taxes will be adjusting the tax rate down to compensate for that. But know that you know, property values have changed dramatically since this was adopted back in two thousand and seven, eight, nine, somewhere in that neighborhood, right, Chris?
I think it's at seven.
So it it would seem to be a good idea to adjust the maximum amount. It's based upon a percentage. Any thoughts, folks?
Well, I mean, it's based on a percentage. So even though the rate, the amounts have gone up, then the percentage would, you know, also go up because, you know, you're you're using the same ratio.
Well, it's fifty, no, it's fifteen percent. So if you have a two hundred thousand dollar house assessed at two hundred thousand, you get an exemption of fifteen percent. So thirty thousand dollars will come off that assessment. The house is now at.
But it won't because the maximum is twelve thousand dollars.
Right, exactly.
That's the point.
Oh, so you're you're suggesting not so much the percentage as the
No, you don't adjust the percentage, but you can adjust the maximum.
The match, yeah, the maximum cap.
Correct, right. I'm not not suggesting, I'm saying you have the option to do that. And, you know, just understanding the numbers, it's something you might want to look at.
Can it be changed to a percentage?
No, no, it's already a percentage. So the statute gives the local municipality the option to choose either ten percent or fifteen percent of assessed value. But then there's a cap on that. Okay? And the cap on that starts at that, well, there's 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 reduced amounts as well, but the number that you had before was the basic maximum of twelve thousand dollars. And then by local law, you're allowed to make it bigger. You know, that's entirely up to the town.
Yeah, that
Again, it's still fifteen percent of whatever the number is, but not to exceed what you pick. I mean, whatever the assessed value is, not to exceed the number that you pick.
So under that example, fifteen percent of a two hundred thousand dollar house lowers it by thirty thousand, but it doesn't because the maximum is twelve. So instead of it actually being a fifteen percent reduction, it's a six percent reduction, twelve thousand, right, six percent of two hundred thousand.
So we would, it it's sort of going to, Christine said, we would have to probably raise our cap for that ratio.
Yeah, and I think you're not even going to get fifteen percent off of a median house anymore, even if you go up to forty five thousand dollars. So again, this relates to town taxes. But I think that, you know, given, and there are only twenty two of these in the town. Just so you know, twenty two residents who are eligible for this that are receiving this benefit, but you know, these are our veterans. I would I would argue, let's go to the maximum on it. You know, it's the least we can do. And I don't think this is going to add up to a lot of money for the town, for sure.
Do you have a figure in mind from the looking at the twenty two, the amounts of the twenty two current?
I would go to I would go to the maximum permitted under, since the 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 percent percentage is a limitation in and of itself. So they will never receive more than a fifteen percent benefit. The question is, will they get to that fifteen percent? And it seems to me that given, given the the sacrifice they made, that it's, you know, it 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 would be incumbent upon us to to raise the limit and extend it, you know, make it indefinite. I mean, why do we need a, why do we need to, you know, limit this for for ten years? I'm not quite sure. There's going to be hundreds of people eligible for this in our community.
So the maximum amount was forty?
Forty five.
For the regular one, right?
Forty five for the regular.
And we just had some new numbers come out. So what's the, what's the latest on median house price in Red Hook?
Well, the median house price in Red Hook is different than the what we, the figures we get are countywide. Three sixty. But I was also able to get a list of the twenty two. I had asked our assistant to print out how many we had, so I understood. You know, the impact. And, you know, there are fair amount of houses that are above that median, assessed above that median. Now going to be assessed seventeen percent more. So my hunch is they're not even going to get the full fifteen percent because the forty five thousand won't even. And and in case you're wondering what what that translates to, given our mill rate in town. I mean, we're talking about two dollars on the pound. I mean, you're talking about giving them a benefit that's a hundred dollars? If that. I mean, it's it's pretty low if they get the maximum.
So we would have to modify the resolution to just on the the cap number.
So yes, the
The percentage stays the same, but the cap numbers can be changed to forty five is what you're proposing, Robert.
In the local law, in section one twenty six dash ten, then there's a blank to fill in, which says you're hereby granted an amount equal to fifty percent of the assessed value, provided that such exemption shall not exceed blank. So that's the blank that you're looking to fill in.
So that would be forty five thousand dollars if we were to do the maximum. And again, we have to set the public hearing. So if you want time to to consider this further, we could put in a figure and then discuss it and and see what kind of public input we got. And the other thing we need to do is that we need to, if we'd like to change the duration of the exemption.
Well, I'm not so sure about making it permanent, because, for instance, if we had made it permanent the last time, we wouldn't be making, probably be making this adjustment right now, because it wouldn't sort of come due and pop up on the agenda of things to do. So, you know, it might make sense to keep a timeframe on it, just for these types of reviews.
Okay.
So it's an odd sort of term. It's not that the law itself expires. It's that the eligibility for the exemption is only for, for an individual person, is only for a period of ten years. So it's not as if the law is gonna come back up for consideration again.
But no, only these amounts, like we're doing this time.
But if we raise, but if we decide to raise it to the cap of forty-five, and there's no more room to go upwards, I don't think it makes that much of a difference if you maybe, if you didn't have a term, because you've already gone as far as you can go. And then it's just a question of, you know, how many people, you know, would be able to be eligible for that? And making sure that if, say, a new person moved to town, who was eligible, they knew. But we can't raise, we can raise the cap to that limit, but we can't go above that limit. So that's why I kind of feel like setting a term doesn't do much harm.
Doesn't do much.
Excuse me, setting a term, it seems to me to actually, doesn't do much, doesn't have a lot of utility.
Well, again, it's, the person eligible would only receive it for ten years under the current law.
So the way that the, yeah, the way that, that corpse describes it is that the duration of the basic exemption is ten years, unless the local law, the local option to remove the ten-year limit has been adopted. So they're giving you very specific parameters within which you can exercise your local option. You see what I mean? It's not that you can pick anything you want to, it's that you can pick one of these options that's on this little menu, or list of menus, basically.
Anyone else have some thoughts? Would you like to hold a public hearing on this at our, at our next meeting, or at a future meeting? Are you ready to insert new numbers for a public hearing? Would you like some more time to think about?
Well, I think we should schedule the public hearing.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I guess I'm confused about what the urgency on this is. In terms of like, why it's coming up now, if it's not the sort of thing that the law expires every ten years, but the exemption does.
It's coming up now, because the assessor brought, I think, to the town's attention that she had people who were coming up to their ten years, and they were going to be losing their exemption. So I, and, and I, it's not, I gather, going to be effective for this assessment round. So I don't think it's urgent that you do it this minute. I think you want to do it this year. So if you're gonna do it, you should do it this year, so that it would be effective for the following year, as I understand it from Cheryl. Is that correct, Robert?
That, that is correct.
Thank you.
Right, because we don't want to inadvertently cause a, a one-year period, for instance, where people didn't get it.
Well, that's true, but I mean, I, I also would say, you know, wouldn't be the worst thing if people are getting their new assessments in the mail. These twenty-two individuals, veterans, if they, you know, understood that we were at the same time working on extending this, in my opinion. And that they knew that they could look forward to this in the future. You know, property taxes, well, I don't need to tell you that. So, what, what's your pleasure, board members? Bill, Bill Hamel, Jacob Testa, thoughts, Julia?
Well, I do think we should agree with Christine, we, we should set the public hearing.
Okay.
And we have a little time between now and then. And even though we're having a public hearing, we don't necessarily have to vote on it right after the public hearing.
Right.
That's fine. Let's, can, what would you, what would you like to have put in those blanks? As far as dollar amounts, and would you like to? Well, it says eliminating the ten-year period in the, in the resolution. Would you want another number besides twelve thousand or forty-five thousand, or would you like to go with the full amount? What are your thoughts? Well, you're all very quiet.
Well, I mean, I thought, I, I thought we just got a report, I mean, not from the county, that the median house price in Red Hook was much higher than three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So my, my hesitancy about picking a number is that, you know, I don't have that, I don't have that information. So as you're saying, you know, it's people won't get the full amount, then, you know. I'd like to know what the median house price numbers we're working with, if we can get a better one, then, you know, more updated, say, than three sixty.
No, that's the county that comes from the state. There's some talk about, you know, if, again, we have a very small database to work with each month on sales. And so, taking a look at what the, you know, town's median is at any given point.
So we have to, we have to set this with the dollar amount that is sent to us by the state, as opposed to if, you know, we know of what sales are, and we have our own data.
Oh, well, you're, you're focused.
The median house price, I mean.
Yeah, you're focused on the median, and I'm not sure why. It only, this is a percentage of that individual's
Assessment.
Assessment. And I'm sorry, I was just looking. So here's, here's what I have for you, for example. Here's the list of individuals. Four hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and four thousand, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and sixteen, two seventy-one, three sixty-five, four oh four, two forty-five, four twenty-nine, three seventy-eight, four twenty-eight, two forty-eight, six fifty-seven, three sixteen, one ninety-nine, three ninety-seven, four seventy-four, two eighty-two, four thirty-one, and three twenty-two. And this is prior to that seventeen.
Right, to that seventeen percent.
I believe it's prior, just received this, so yes. So those are, those are the current assessment amounts. And I think that you can see that many of them have you know, a three or more as their, their first number. So the fifteen percent maximum forty-five thousand would apply to all of these, with the exception of the very few that are under three hundred thousand. Does that make sense? They would not, everyone
It would apply to all of them, but you're saying they wouldn't get the max of forty-five thousand.
Exactly. Well, no, I'm sorry. What I'm saying is, yes, they would get the max of forty-five thousand. They would not get the max of fifteen percent, right? So if you have a house, a property that's valued at four hundred thousand, fifteen percent of that is sixty thousand. Since the maximum is forty-five, their exemption would still only be forty-five thousand, not fifteen percent. Okay, so we're not really doing a fifteen percent exemption, except in a couple of instances, anyway.
And Robert, with the mill rate, what is the actual change to the tax due with a forty-five thousand dollar exemption?
Are you talking about a, not even a hundred bucks? So we're not talking about from, from a budgeting standpoint, we're talking about a nominal amount.
Right. So, I mean, I, I'm fine holding off on this if we feel like we need a little bit more information. But I think I'm also comfortable extending to the forty-five thousand dollar limit and removing the ten-year limitation.
Bill?
Yeah, that's pretty much how I feel about it. Because the reality is hardly anybody's gonna get fifteen percent.
Right.
And it doesn't, I mean, the total amount, if it's a hundred bucks, you're, you're really, what you're looking at is maybe two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Oh, in revenue to the town.
Yeah. I think it's, it's pretty nominal. Okay, Christine, Jacob, so would you, shall we call a public hearing? Shall we put in forty-five thousand? I mean, that would be my recommendation, but I don't wanna.
Well, there is another blank in the resolution for you to think about, which, you know, you can take some more time if you want to. The other blank is for the maximum, again, if you want to raise the maximum for the additional exemption for disability.
And that, remind them the numbers, please, Chris.
So the current number is, oh my gosh, I think it's fifteen thousand. No, I'm sorry, it's forty thousand. The current maximum of that, of the disability one is, is forty thousand, and that maximum can go up to one hundred and fifty. Again, for the assessment exemption. That's computed differently. It's fifty percent of the person's disability rating. Not to exceed X, whatever X is. I'm sorry, it's fifty percent, fifty percent of the disability rating. So if somebody had, let's say, somebody had a disability rating of, of fifty percent, right? They were fifty percent disabled, then they would have, what, twenty-five percent, right, exemption? Up to blank, whatever the blank is, whatever the maximum is.
And the maximum currently is?
Forty.
And the options again, that they give us?
Forty, a whole bunch of layers up to one hundred and fifty, so about every ten or so. It's about, you know, ten thousand dollar increments.
And I think that part of the reason we're hung up about this is that it's just, it's got a lot of technicalities to it. But I, I guess where I land is that I think it's, potentially has a lot more meaningful impact on the individual than it does on the budget of the town. So I think I would be comfortable, you know, structuring it so that those individuals can get, you know, basically an excellent benefit.
Plus, if you, if you suffered a fifty percent service-related disability in service to your country, I, you know, it seems to me that it's a small price for a community to, to absorb. Given, given the sacrifice that was made.
Yeah. Great.
So then, Bill, are you advocating that we would move that to the hundred and fifty thousand dollar max? For the disabled, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap, based on fifty percent of the disabled rate?
How many, Robert, did, shall I give you the number, how many?
Well, that's obviously a subset of these twenty-one or twenty-two.
That's what, that's what I figured. It's, it's a small number, so.
I'm looking at codes here. I, I couldn't tell you. I'm sure it's just a handful of people. Know some of these folks here, but I, I wouldn't be able to tell you. But that's something, I can get that information for you, for the public hearing?
I still agree with Julie, that I think that it's I think you were pretty articulate in the way you put it, that the, the impact on a very few people who really made a significant sacrifice, personal sacrifice for their country, compared to what we have to absorb, just that, you know, the math there doesn't seem to suggest we shouldn't give them the maximum.
So then it sounds like the consensus is for the, for, for the basic, is to go to the max of forty-five thousand dollars for the cap. And then we have to fill in the blank on the disabled, disability aspect for the public hearing notice. So I guess I'm just trying to clarify, if we're suggesting that we go to the hundred and fifty thousand dollar max for the cap on, on that one also.
I would, since it's a percentage of that. Just my
Well, Chris, or is it still the same situation where it's a percentage that then it can't exceed, so say it's fifteen percent?
It can, no, it, it, this one works a little differently. Again, it's fifty percent of whatever their disability rating is. So if they have a ten percent disability rating, it's gonna be one number. If they have a hundred percent disability rating, it's gonna be a completely different number. So that is gonna vary dependent on the individual, and then the maximum is gonna be this number that you fill in the blank, okay? So I imagine it's hard to quantify, you know, because it depends on the individual, but.
Yeah. Well, I can get you, I can get you that information and run some numbers for you. Make a couple of simple assumptions that, you know, will
But do we have to have this blank filled in to schedule the public hearing, or no?
Yes, I would say you do. So if you aren't ready to do that, you can wait and do that at another meeting. But if we're gonna schedule a public hearing, we should have the blank filled in.
I think that where we don't have urgency to do this at the next meeting, it's not like it's going to expire on May thirtieth, if we don't do this, right? I think it'd be helpful to have the numbers and just be able to review it and fill in the blanks. Like, having given it the consideration of actually seeing what things look like and making an informed decision. It's not to say that we won't go to the max or anything like that. It's just, I think I would feel more comfortable actually seeing some of the information that we haven't been able to yet, before actually setting the public hearing.
Well, I mean, just to clarify, Jacob, we're talking about twenty-one, twenty-two properties. Maximum of, you know, with, with, with the rate. A maximum of ninety-something dollars each, you're talking about two thousand dollars on the disability one. I'm not quite sure we'll be able to get you. You know, we can get you what, what's in currently in place, but that has a little bit more fluidity to it.
All right, well, so, we'll just, why don't we just put on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss again, and then hopefully set the public hearing?
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to do this before Memorial Day, it seems, it would be nice to do it. Let's, let's do that.
We can still do it before Memorial Day, because I just looked at the calendar for when the meetings would be in made.
Better, we gotta get it, yeah. All right. But right, very good. Thank you. So we'll come back to that. I'll try to get you that information as soon as I can. And we'll look for it. We're gonna have a pretty lengthy meeting on the tenth. We'll set it for the twenty of May. All right, so let's go on to the next.
Wait, I'm sorry, what did you say? What was that about the fifth of May?
No, twenty-fifth. I said, we'll, we'll, we'll take it up again.
Oh, set the hearing for the twenty-fifth, yes, okay, thank you.
And, and then we can
Well, you don't, I mean, if we have the information and we've had a chance to look at it, that we should be, hopefully, fairly quick decision to set the public hearing on the tenth.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
All right, I think that's what we have, with the exception of a couple of department reports, committee reports. You're with me if you would. We have a rather lengthy, what a surprise. They do so much work, John and his crew.
But a lot of it is sort of annual prep, cleanup and prep for getting the parks open, because they're open now. Do you want me to do a really quick, correct department report?
Would you please? There we go, I think I've got it.
Yeah, just, just go, scroll up to the page in front of that for a minute, if you can.
This page?
Yeah, that, that's the thing. Look at the, look at the table of contents, or the number of items that are reported in this report. But, so, yeah, so just to summarize, many of them have to do with either preparing to open the parks. Or, you know, continue that, you know, there's a number of trees that have been damaged that are, again, so that we're gonna need some tree work done there. There's, and then in terms of, you know, and reports on the, the plans for mowing and There's, and then in terms of, you know, and reports on the, the plans for mowing and which equipment to use and that sort of thing. But sort of big items that's in there is there's a discussion of the proposed upgrade or about to be proposed upgrades to the skate park due to increased usage there and the huge amount of interest from very diverse groups that want to use the challenger field. And so I think we, they're, they're going to be asking us as the town board to maybe set some more definitive policies on the use of the field and, and when it can be, whether it can be unrestricted use or whether it should be in theory like locked up if it's not going to be assigned for a particular game or soccer or baseball or whatever it might be due to problems with, you know, I don't know if people don't realize it's a turf fields until they get on there with their dog and then they, you know, there's, they curb their dog on it, but it doesn't, and they don't clean up, but of course it doesn't go away like it in this wood on grass or in theory go away. So still some, some issues like that that have to be worked out. And you may recall from a previous meeting that there were some requests to set up pickleball leagues. Pickleball's growing like crazy, but they, they've decided not to have any formalized pickleball leagues this year. And, and then they're still continuing, you know, there's a number of items that would fall under capital improvements that they're going to have to come to us with requests for, such as like replacing lighting up for the volleyball area and a couple of other projects, so we may be seeing some of those from them, probably sooner rather than later. But once again, I mean, just looking at this list right here, that is a tremendous amount of work. Oh, I also wanted to mention that the dugouts for the field over at Rec Park West are under construction already. So this, this group doesn't, this, they don't sit around, they are busy all the time and they do a tremendous amount of work. And we should all be very, very thankful to them for the high quality maintenance that they do on, on our parks.
Agreed. Thank you very much, Christine. I won't go through the entire report, it's available at the clerk's office. We also had a report from to, a report from Highway.
Robert, there was a note on there about declaring surplus property. Have you, I don't think you've taken action on that. Is that something that you want to do now or put on the agenda for the next meeting?
I think we, well, let's, let's discuss it, folks.
Do me to go over the report first and then we can.
Would you, would you, would you please?
Yes, yeah, so from the Highway Department, Teresa gave us an update on the New York State budget and the road improvement funding amounts for Red Hook, which include CHIPS, Extreme Winter Recovery, Pave New York, Pave Our Pothole program. The total of all those is around $280,500. So it seems like a good amount of money to help the Highway Department improve our roads. Teresa noted that the Highway Department has received a new case backhoe, replacing the backhoe purchased in 2000. And like we briefly touched on before, the Highway Department would like to sell the old backhoe on municipal auction sites. And the board would need to authorize the sale of surplus equipment to do that. But she thanked us for the replacement and sees it as a great investment for the Highway Department. She also talked about reinstating a seventh position in the Highway Department, which is something I know that we've been discussing for some time now. So that's the substance of the report for the most part. So I think what we were going to talk about was, you know, the question that Chris asked about authorizing the sale of surplus equipment.
Sure. You know, my recommendation would be that we would do it at a future meeting. Typically, when we get this communication from the Highway Department, we get a rough estimate of what it might bring. And so that we contemplate whether it's better to have a backup machine or an additional machine. We heard about the need for additional equipment, you know, over the years. And for the folks at home, we've appropriated $1.4 million, which far exceeds what historically has been granted over to the Highway Department in a decade. We've, we've already done it in, in six years and change. So I think maybe an estimate for Teresa before we take it up, does that make sense? For folks?
Well, yeah, I have a question for council. I understand what the, what has to be done for the sale of surplus. But many government agencies donate surplus to other government agencies who are in need of, of that kind of equipment. And I was wondering whether A, that's something that the board would want to consider and B, what it takes legally, how much different is that than, than adopting resolutions to sell, to sell it for surplus?
Chris, did you want to take that or would you like me to?
She's muted.
Chris, you're muted.
Take it, but I was still muted. I think you could do that, Bill, I want to look at that specifically, but I do recall that you have some flexibility to convey to another municipality. Are, are you thinking within the town or are you thinking the county or what?
Probably thinking in the county since that's probably the most visibility that we have in terms of other municipalities that may be in need of that piece of equipment. And they could be close by, you know, who knows whether, you know, Mylan or, you know, places of, you know, or Pine Plains or other places. I don't know who has this piece of equipment and who doesn't, but if we just got a new one and someone else needed one and didn't have one at all, it seems to me, in my 29 years of government service, that's something we did often. I was on the receiving end and on the giving end and on both sides, it was always really an important act of goodwill.
Yeah, well, we can, we can suggest that to, to Teresa to let the other departments know. I know they communicate, you know, on occasion about equipment and the potential for sharing equipment. This is a 20-year-old machine or 22-year-old machine. It, it may not, you know, be as, as desired, but, but we'll see. You know, we, we may also want to hang on to it because we have some projects, we need to move some dirt, right? We've got big dirt piles that need to go over to Rec Park West, so we should, we should give it some thought. Teresa has, you know, mentioned that she doesn't have additional staff to help us out with this. You know, these projects, there is mention in, in her communication about, you know, considering putting in a seventh position. And as you know, I've been trying to work with her to rehire one of the individuals that worked for us since, well, probably five or six months now, so. All things that will get more information on as we go forward. But I think on the piece of equipment, I think we should give it some thought about whether or not we may want to have it operating separately. Since we temporarily for the next year or two have these projects, we may want to go out and hire an individual in order to work for our Parks Department since we need somebody to operate big equipment and get these piles moved over and will save a lot of money for the taxpayers in the process. Okay.
So you'll ask Teresa for a ballpark, ballpark estimate, yeah?
Estimate and an assessment of the equipment and what it might need. And just some of the issues that it's had over the years. I know we review all the vouchers for repairs and maintenance, but I'm sure she and, and the operators have a, you know, good sense of, you know, what's required. Piece of equipment, okay. Anything else on that topic? All right, we also have a police report. And if you will, a moment, I can get that up as well, sorry, not police, I misspoke, a building department report. Who would like to do the building department report?
Since I'm the building department's, hey, on.
Thank you, Bill.
Makes sense. So it was long, it was 143 pages, but the two pages that are most important are the first and the, I think about 142nd. This is for, obviously for several months.
Yeah.
There were 102 permits issued, 237 inspections done. There were 50 certificates of completion or occupancy issued and there were five complaints received. And the total revenue that they generated was $30,016.60. The, the other piece of information that showed up, it's in a pie chart back on, I think, page 142 or so, is that of that $30,000, almost $22,000 were residential building permits. And it, it's sort of, I think, an important metric to give an idea of just how much building and activities are going on in Red Hook at this time.
And that's, that was in one quarter, you mean, right?
Yes.
Yeah, right, that's a lot of, that's a lot of activity.
There's a lot of activity and typically activity picks up in this department this time of year, if it ever stops raining. And folks can complete their projects. And we have had our new employee, Brandon Mullins, has been working very hard to get up to speed. And, and we're very pleased with his performance in the building department. And we hope he has a nice, long future with us here in town around. Okay. That's all we have, we don't have any other before we say goodnight to the folks at home. We are going to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Excuse me, Robert, did you set a public hearing date with a resolution 22? Did you vote on that?
What, was that the Cold War veterans?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have.
We did, we did not, we're gonna take it up at the next meeting.
Okay, so, okay, thanks.
No worries. We have a motion to go into executive mission to discuss matters under negotiation, collective bargaining. Is there?
Oh, is that a motion or?
That was a motion to go, yeah.
Okay, second.
Second, thank you, Christine. For the folks at home, good night and thank you very much for joining us. We'll come out if we take any action and that'll be a part of the record as well. Any further discussion, anything to add tonight before we do that? Okay, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Bill Hamel?
Hi.
Okay, very good. So for board members, if you would put yourself on mute.
I'll say goodnight.
Goodnight, Chris.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We are back, it's now 9:57. We are reopening the meeting. At this time, we'll be taking no additional action. I'd like to wish everybody a good evening. Is there a motion to close tonight's town board meeting?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Christine, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Bill Hamel?
Hi.
And myself, good night, everyone, thank you very much for your time.
Good night.